Anything for job classification to report to me? We're not mad. Or we gotta look in Casa. Ten. Eight, ten.
It's you. You're taking care of us today.
I'm happy to rest.
This is the ninth road eatery.
This is the ninth road eatery? The freeze-dried eatery?
I'll take it later. I'm cleared. That's ported.
Okay, it's nine o'clock. Let's get started. Uh, Dan, I understand you're gonna come forward and say a prayer for us. Why don't you step up to the mic there so you can be seen and heard? Yep, face the crowd. There you go.
All right, well, just thank everybody. I thank you, Lord, that you're in control, Lord, and we just need your wisdom. I, I just speak of blessing over the council and wisdom to just make good decisions for our community, for our people. And, Lord, I just am reminded that the land is yours and, and we want to align our will with your will, Lord. So show us your will, show us your, your grace, your mercy, and your favor, and we thank you for your goodness. And, Lord, I just bless everybody here in Jesus mighty name.
Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. With that...
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you. The eleventh, the August eleventh meeting will come to order. Mr. Patterson excused. We have six here today. Uh, first item on the agenda is a public input on anything on the agenda. Would anyone like to come up forward? There's an opportunity afterwards as well to speak. City non-chair moves on to the attorney, Mark Marcel.
Uh, if you remember, there was a motion by Tamarack to get all of, to get additional discovery and part of that, they wanted information from the council. Uh, the courts ruled on that and they are not entitled to additional discovery. Um, so they won't be trying to sort through all of your guys' stuff. In addition, I was asked to look at the regional sewer boards, uh, documents. I do not have their actual bond documents, although those have been requested. But the, um, I did go through the resolutions and the resolutions, the resolutions both the council and the commissioners that approved the project for the regional sewer board, leading me to believe that the county taxpayers are on the hook to back the bond that was issued. So once we get the bond documents, we can be a hundred percent sure, but once again, it looks like, uh, and I think that's also why they came last year to the council seeking support for the additional bond money, um, is they need the, the council to back the bond and the loan applications, um, so that they can get favorable rates. So that's, that's where we're at.
So, uh, to summarize, the, um, Tamarack lawsuit, uh, asking for discovery from the council has been that, been denied by the judge, correct?
Correct.
And you're saying that the county could be on the hook for potential payment of this loan, ban, bond, whatever from the sewer district?
Yeah, so not only this one, but if they get an upsized one and then they can't meet their obligations, it appears that the county would be the, um, fallback payee.
Okay.
Can I speak, Mr. President?
You, you may speak.
Okay, so this is in regards to the sewer district. So I've just been watching and listening and I actually contacted JPR in June and had a conversation with their, the representative that represents the Marshall County, um, Regional Sewer District, um, very nice lady. Um, um, then I requested all of the invoices because I wanted to see what has been spent year to date I got through June. Um, I sat this weekend, I finally sat down and I actually put everything into a spreadsheet and I shared that with my fellow council members just to get an idea of what's been spent so far and just to kind of let the public know. Um, so far in total, they spent one point one, or one million, one hundred forty-nine thousand, sixty-four dollars and eighty-six cents. That's how much they've spent year to date, um, with no guarantee if they're going to get a grant, without a grant. What? Year to date?
Till May?
No, through Ju-, uh, through May. That's from the beginning of the sewer district when it came on in twenty twenty-three. Through my invoices that they gave me with the May.
Twenty twenty-three, that's not year to date.
The end, well, the end of May. So all of what they've spent up to May of the invoices that they have received, uh, that they sent to me. Um, some of the, um, people that they've requested, there's a lot of consultants. Most of their expenses are coming from consultant fees and attorney fees. So, um, Baker Telly is one of their consultants. They've spent a hundred and thirteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars and twenty-three cents through May with Baker Telly. Um, and then, uh, their attorneys, a hundred and forty-eight thousand. And then, um, JPR, which is Jones Petrie Rafinsky, uh, eight hundred and forty-seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars and sixty-three cents. And on their invoice, I need to find out more. It says in there that they have a contract of three million, eighty-one thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. So I don't know if that is like a sealed contract that they owe that money and it looks like they're kind of making payments every month. Um, but that's more than the bond that they even have. So it's very concerning to me. Um, they, the sewer district can't promise that they're gonna have, um, rates lower than two hundred dollars, which is just astronomical and not what they promised when they started. Um, and they said it was gonna be between seventy and a hundred dollars. They're now coming out that the hookup fees are astronomical as well. Um, and I just feel like the council needed to be aware, especially if we are gonna be on the hook for this of the astronomical. I feel like it's fiscally irresponsible spending, um, that needs to probably come to a halt until they get their grant that they say that they're gonna get or they're gonna try. Um, I know that in working with a lot of my non-for-profits, things like that, grants aren't coming through. Things are changing. People are losing their jobs because grants aren't coming through. Grants have stopped. So I don't even know what the probability of them of receiving a grant would even be right now in this time. So that's all I understand.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, hold on, Bill. Uh, so you know, the members of the council wanna weigh in, talk about this?
It's absolutely irresponsible, fiscally irresponsible board to spend money. They have zero income. This is all off of debt. It should never have been allowed. Uh, I bet you that there's probably members on that board who hasn't even looked at invoices, don't even know what the, all the money's going out and they're, uh, standing on their financial position that they have got, uh, the ability to go over three million dollars in debt and you, the citizens of Marshall County, not just those in the sewer district, will be on the hook. All of us will be on the hook when this fails and inevitably is probably going to fail because of the mismanagement of this board. And, uh, so I get fired up about it because now you're talking about screwing over every citizen here in Marshall County, every taxpayer, because we can't fiscally respond. Let me go to the beginning of this. The council gave them seventy-five thousand dollars to start. Now, if there was any wisdom in this, they would have used that to apply for a grant. And when you got shot down for the grant, you're done. And they didn't. They went in and got in debt and that should not have happened. You would not run your business like this. You would ta-, I wouldn't let this bird run the finances in my daughter's pinky bank. You don't go in debt when you have no income. You shouldn't go in debt anyway, but definitely when they don't have an income and they don't, and this is, uh, this bird has been crazily mismanaged and ran and, uh, I'm forward to be the...
About the sewer boards or the council?
Sewer, sewer board.
Okay.
The sewer board.
I have quite a question. The fees that have been expended right now? You think that would be spread out, you're saying, against the citizens, the property owners of the county?
Yeah, we, we asked for the bond documents, right? And we haven't gotten them yet, but the council and the commissioners both passed resolutions.
I, I have a hard time hearing you.
He can't hear down there.
The council and the commissioners both passed resolutions in support. So it appears that we, we backed the bonds. And otherwise, what are, what are the bondholders getting repaid on, right? The, the sewer board has, the sewer board, the district have no assets right now. I mean, they've spent, um, over a million dollars and they've got a study, but that, the study won't repay, right? That's not collateral for anything. And once again, if you recall, they came back last year, asked for additional support from the councils so they could get another loan, another bond, um, apply for a loan through the state. Um, and the council said no, that there wasn't enough movement. You know, in this interest rate environment, it's also gonna be interesting if they do get another bond, right? We're talking about rates and how much the each individual household has to pay. What would it be if you don't have any assets, right? What's, what's the interest rate gonna be and how's that impact the individual ratepayers? I mean, there's a lot of questions that we just don't have answers to yet, but like I said, hopefully we'll get the bond documents and we can get some certainty on who's on the hook to pay.
Thank you for clarifying that, because I thought I heard that.
Any other questions, comments about this?
You know, we keep throwing numbers out there that we really don't know the exact numbers. You know, there's, I think, uh, the citizens are concerned they're gonna be two hundred dollars a month. Uh, it's gonna cost them twenty thousand dollars. No, those numbers we even know yet because and as far as the grants from the state, it, it's on a, it's on a rotating, uh, system every year, which I think we were standing at twenty out of twelve people were approved last year, or the year before last. Last year it moved up to forty-eight. And, uh, that number will go up and down. There's a chance this year that we could get grants or low interest loans. We don't know what the state is gonna supply. Additionally, I might add that the, I think the commissioners and we as a council kind of cut the legs off the district by reducing the amount of funds that we had two million dollars that we had said we were gonna put into the sewer district, let it finish. And it, 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 it wasn't finalized, no, but there wa-, there was two million dollars is what said was gonna be put into it. Then we reduced it to five hundred thousand and then we reduced it to a hundred and fifty thousand. And finally, we cut a final check for seventy-five thousand. Well, the, the, the state and the people who approve these grants and low interest loans, they look at that and they think, well, the commissioners and the council are just cutting the legs off of this sewer district. And, uh, I think we need to reevaluate where our support is too. That the, you know, the, I've read, I've visited third world countries and I know what not having sewer systems and drainage and all that in, in, uh, different areas, uh, can do to a country. Go, go visit India. But this is a vital area of our community is, is the lakes and it's a vital area of Marshall County. And I, 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 I think we're not, now, having said that, if it's gonna be two hundred dollars a month for a citizen or twenty thousand dollars, I say no, but I don't think that's gonna happen. We don't know and none, none of the people here know, but we keep, we keep criticizing the board and, and, and keep criticizing the, um, engineers involved in, in putting this together. This is fairly common expenses that are incurred. When you build roads or you build sewer systems, uh, uh, it's, engineering costs are not cheap. And, uh, and I, I, and I, maybe, maybe, and I'm not saying I'm really for or or against the expenditures, but what I am saying is I think we're being very harsh and I think, uh, we're also pitting people against other people. It's gotten way out of hand. I go on Facebook and I've said nothing publicly till right now and I've been attacked because, um, I'm against, uh, retired people and veterans and everything else has been said about, uh, both Gemini. And it's very unfortunate because that's, that's not the way we should govern. And it's not the way we should behave. And I think in the, in additionally, in the commissioners meeting last Monday, there was just an all-out attack on the lawyers and the, uh, and the board and, um, and I think we, as a council, have responsibility in this too. Um, as far as the funding is concerned.
Greg, I think that the, the big issue is this is debt. They don't have an income. They have not been given other than seventy-five thousand. This is debt. And that's where the concern is. Now, had this been a part of here where appropriated so much funds, like every department will be, um, they have been this year and, uh, however, room things, you get appropriated money, this is your budget and this is how you go. This is potential to blow three million, uh, over three million dollars of debt.
And that money is already been spent and it is, it will be a responsibility as, as we've been told earlier.
Oh, lawyers get attacked a lot. Their lawyer should be okay with that. Uh, more importantly though, Nicole said, Nicole said the financial advisors have been paid over a hundred thousand dollars. My understanding is that the rates and the hookup fees came from the financial advisors. So we're not talking, we're not talking voodoo numbers here when we're talking about how much people are gonna have to spend. The sewer district spent over a hundred thousand dollars to get those numbers. I'd hope for a hundred thousand dollars, they're accurate. And if they're not, that's another question. What do, what do we spend a hundred thousand dollars on?
And, and whereas the end result though is gonna be, unless we, we could get this reorganized, we could all come together and come to an agreement with, with the sewer district. What's gonna happen is the people of Marshall County are gonna be on the hook for the money that was spent so far. And additionally, five years or ten years or two years down the line, we are gonna have to have a sewer system out there, uh, for the health of our citizens. And we're gonna start all over again and spend that money again to rebuild a sewer system that will, uh, help our community. Uh, it's, it's pay now or pay later. And I, I think we re-, need to revisit our priorities in this and just back off for, for a while. And we've just been, I, I think the council members, some of the council members and the commissioners have been downright vicious in making people afraid of, of their, uh, community and the people they live around. There was an anonymous letter I saw of a guy who was, um, concerned he bought his home years ago and lived there on weekends and, uh, now he's, uh, faced with a sewer system is not working, his, uh, uh, his system is not working properly now. And he's faced with pumping and hauling, which is a great expense. And there are many, many homes out there right now who are facing the same thing.
How many?
And that's gonna get worse and worse as time goes on.
How many?
How many do you think there are?
I don't know. The health department will give us...
I know, but I can think of, uh, three off the top of my head. I really don't know. I don't, I'm not associated with the lakes out there.
We've spent over one point one million and a lot of these, uh, places are, that's all they're telling you. The sewer board is, uh, sewer, 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 and they're not even looking at the different state-approved processes that we could go through to fix that. But we're a million dollars in debt and can't give you any answer. You can't say how many people are in pumping hall. You can't tell us how many family systems are. One point one million dollars has been spent and they can't give answers. That's a...
So you, you, what answers you have then?
I'll say something.
I'm not, but my answer is you stop spending. That's how, how that is. It's very simple. And if you have a board who, if you have to, they have to find out a full...
I think it would be a better answer, exactly what you said, is to put a pause on the spending until we figure out what's, what grants and, uh, what grants and, uh, uh, low interest loans that we might improve.
And that's what I'm asking. So I had a meeting with AK Industries, who is here in town, because I wanna get to the facts. What do they have to offer? And they actually offer systems for people on small lots who can't put a new septic in. They offer options that they can tie in and I think Berwoodworth can share more about that. Um, I don't understand septics, but the gentleman at AK Industries was explaining it and there are, um, individuals in our community that will come in and install those systems. The problem is they have been approved at the state level. The problem is, is our health department.
Yeah, I know, that's good, but what I'm telling this council right now is you need to quit a tax on people online and quit a tax on people.
Greg, please.
Can I finish? So there are options for individuals. Maybe pumping hall is cheaper than spending two to two fifty a month and spending twenty five, twenty thousand dollars for a hookup. Maybe that's what somebody wants to do and not be forced to be put on a sewer. That's the problem that I have. There's so many unknowns. Even the sewer board has so many unknowns that the spending needs to stop until they can get the unknowns resolved and they can get funding in place. But they're not interested in that. There's been conversations and asked them and the response was this sewer board is gonna go in. And that's why the people are upset because they feel like they're being forced to pay over two hundred dollars a month and not knowing what their hookups, they may have to redo their electric. There's so many different unknowns. The sewer board needs to stop the spending until grant money, free money, not interest, not state revolving loans are put in place.
That's exactly what I just said.
Correct. But it's falling on deaf ears. So now what? Because they're accruing debt at an astronomical rate and it's gonna fall on us to figure out how to pay for it and the taxpayers to figure out how to pay for it. So they're not stopping their spending. Now, what's the next level? What do we do next?
If I could chime in.
Okay, that's it.
If I could chime in. Um, I met with, or I testified in front of the commissioners about some interest and they were having a discussion about, um, sewer and the lawsuit going forward and whether or not you can remove a member at will. And I just suggested that we get together as a joint body and talk about this. There's a lot of information. It would take hours to probably clear the air, tell the big picture. Um, I wrote down some notes here, probably gonna reserve those for public comment. How would the members feel about having a, a work session or some sort of public meeting where the people can attend? Because there's a lot of information that's just not known. The two million dollars, I'll just touch on one. That was ARPA money that was suggested. The county council voted it down five to two for the sewer board. It's because it's our prerogative to decide how the money is spent and we do it with the best interest of the people in mind. Many of us felt that we should use that money for the roads. We felt that the roads are a bigger issue than, than septic versus sewer, so that's why we voted for it. Uh, the one thing I hear about people, roads, roads, roads. And so that's what we use the two million dollars for. Uh, it was even used for our lifelong money. Uh, there's an attempt to put five hundred thousand in the blue zones. Um, that's discretionary and so that money was voted down by the council. Just because the commissioners said sewer is getting two million doesn't mean they're getting two million. So I, I would suggest that we talk about this maybe more during the public input. We're gonna have a lot of people here on the agenda whose, whose time is valuable. We can bring this back up during the public input, but how would you folks feel about a, a work session?
I think we should incorporate the health department with that.
Absolutely. Good idea.
Okay.
Good.
Yes. I would make that motion.
But I, I think we should also agree to quit the attacks now. Those are uncalled for and not professional at all in our communities.
Okay, point, point taken. And obviously I think decorum is important, how we behave uh, during the council meeting and outside of the council meeting should be noted. Let's come back during public input, talk about this a little bit more. Okay.
Do we need a motion for a joint session?
Let's, let's, let's come back to public meeting, public input, okay? Let's move on to some, uh, subcommittee reports. Uh, highway subcommittee, do you guys have anything?
Pretty much, we, we bought the machine that you guys wanted to do and we'd already, we hadn't had a meeting since and we have our grant today, I believe.
Right.
So we have a meeting, so basically that's all we have to report. The machine was purchased and people are happy about that and...
Okay, I'll see it work.
We'll see it, we're gonna see it work.
Okay. Any other comments from the subcommittee?
No, I, I discussed other than, and this hadn't come up, but I knew I've contacted several of you that, um, uh, who Wednesday I'm, I'm gonna talk with. But I don't even notice. I can't remember. I talked to, I might have talked to Jim about some of the subdivisions, uh, conditions on some, uh, subdivisions and, and things of that nature that, uh, I'm gonna bring up, um...
Talking about roads, roads and subdivisions?
Yeah, for, um, we got some things that need to be taken care of there, but...
Okay. Anyone else for the highway conversation? Okay. I'll move on to, uh, some good news. Uh, the, the budget finance committee, um, hasn't met, uh, since last meeting. Um, we did talk to Steve Dalton, I believe that was prior to last meeting, but, um, again, I give you guys a compilation of some key funds. You can get this information in the claims reports. You can get it on the SBS portal and the monthly, uh, uh, cash balance reports. The money looks very good. I remember looking at, uh, a budget form. I can't remember if it was two or four B, whatever it was. The, uh, auditor has put that together and just what I thought, uh, kinda in my projections, if we don't do anything different, the general fund will still remain at a healthy balance of eleven point three million. On top of that, you'll have roughly four million in rainy day. This is end of year projections if we do nothing different. Uh, obviously the decisions we make on spending can affect those balances. County finances are very good. I added a new line. It's right at the first column. It says total county funds. We have an annual budget that was passed last year, forty-two point eight million. And that's general fund and that's all the special funds. We have a cash balance right now, forty, as of the end of July, forty-three point seven million dollars. I don't know if you guys saw that the state comptroller put out a press release bragging how Indiana has an eleven percent budget surplus. That's good. We have a hundred percent surplus, meaning that we have enough cash in the bank right now to pay for the county government going forward if we have no revenue coming in. Doesn't mean that we don't, uh, watch this wisely and, and, and responsibly and just go on a spending spree, but you know, there are dedicated funds in some of this that we can't touch. Obviously, the general fund in rainy day has more flexibility, but the financial picture in Marshall County is very, very good. Uh, all of that forty-three point seven million dollars is not up for grabs, but it, it's, we are in a very good position. We continually get revenue on a monthly basis and, uh, things are good. You're smiling.
He's not up for grabs.
It's, it's not up for grabs. It's not. So that's my report. We'll get into the budget later. Uh, any questions, I can answer them. Any comments? Moving on.
Thank you for your report. It's always so fair. I love it.
Yes, it is. I love spreadsheets. Moving on to job classification and compensation committees, I report. Nicole, do you have anything?
We haven't met, um, and I think there's only one thing, Angie, we talked about CASA. We're trying to figure out what to do with CASA and I think we're gonna be bringing a recommendation to the council um, as far as what the next step is, um, but we're still trying to finalize some details. So probably August, right, Angie, or, yeah, that's kinda what I'm thinking. Meet in August to get something scheduled.
Okay. Questions, comments? Moving on, Chelsea, nine twenty-seven. We're getting close.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I thought I would wait until I got here so that everyone could hear me speak and what I handed to you. Um, I gave...
Chelsea, real quick, so sorry. Just tell the folks who you are.
Yes, so my name is Chelsea Smith. I am the treasurer of One Marshall County. And maybe before I get started and kinda what's in your hands too, is a, a snapshot of who we are and what Marshall, One Marshall County is trying to accomplish. So a little bit of background for those that don't know, um, I think it was about two and a half years ago, we started having meetings with, between Marshall County Economic Development, um, the Community Foundation, what was Crossroads and, um, help from InFocus. We got together, uh, you know, what was gonna be the future of Crossroads at the time. And fast forward through a lot of meetings and it kinda got put on pause a little bit because of ready, you know, all those ready funds that were going on and, and we kinda put our attention to ready at the time. So we got on, put on pause on creating One Marshall County. But I got involved as treasurer last July, uh, in the... But I got involved as treasurer last July, uh, in this organization. So what we have in front of you is One Marshall County's mission is to collaboratively champion economic prosperity, elevate quality of life and ensure a resilient and sustainable future for every resident. So that looks like a very wide range of topics that go into that. We have five pillars. Uh, on that second attachment I gave you, uh, on the second page, we have five thematic committees. Housing and infrastructure, education and workforce development, quality of life, quality of place and business innovation and growth. We have twenty eight members on our board. We meet, uh, monthly to see how these subcommittees are doing, what, uh, what they're working on. And right now we're just in strategic development mode. So we are trying to figure out our strategic plan and how we can best align with the county and with the cities and towns of what you all want to see regarding these five dramatic pillars. You know, we think we have an idea of what we wanna do, but we also need to make sure we align with your priorities as well. So I'm just here to give a quick update on where we're at. Uh, I have some stats in what I provided to you as well. Um, but we just wanna be listening and hearing how we can assist in any of these areas and what your priorities are. So.
Okay. Questions, comments? Uh, many of us know you and, uh, we appreciate you coming forward and, uh, you're an easy person to get ahold of. So obviously if we have questions that arise after today, we, we get ahold of you and vice versa, okay?
Absolutely. I just wanna be here officially in person as well to, to present to you all. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up at nine thirty is, is Bowen Health. Gentlemen, state your names and, uh, your title and bank account information, all that good stuff, right?
Zach Cook, Director of Community Engagement for Bowen Health.
Mark Roller, Executive Director of Bowen Health.
Thank you. Mark, what's your last name again?
Grohler.
Okay. Oh. It's printed there for me to see, so.
Hard to say sometimes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks for having us. So we want to, uh, go over our annual report with you guys. Um, so why don't we, we'll look at this page right here for a second. Um, I'll go ahead and get us started. So we continue to do, um, great things with assisting with housing solutions. I think we've done a lot of great work at Serendy's Place, helping the folks over there. Um, uh, recovery paths. We continue to, uh, be very engaged in, uh, Marshall County Hope. And, um, drug court as well kinda goes into their law enforcement. These are things I'm very proud of that we've done over the last, over the last year, but also the last few years. Um, our partnership with our schools are, are awesome, stronger than ever. Um, with our student assistance program. And last year we rolled out a new virtual therapy option called Better View for folks that, um, you know, had issues and barriers getting to the office. So now they can get that done at school during school hours. So really, really, those are the highlights from last year. Really proud of the work we've done and, uh, serving the community. So I brought Mark along with us today. He's our Executive Director of our region. And, um, he's new to Bowen. I don't know if you guys have met him yet, but, um, he's gonna go over some of the numbers on the other side of the handout so you guys can get to know him a little bit too.
Great. Thank you, council members. Appreciate having us here today. Um, as you know, your county has designated Bowen as your s- community mental health care center. And what comes with that is a, a sharing of, of tax monies that you bring in. And last year that was four hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. That is a significant amount of money that is difficult to part with. And I know you want to make sure that we're at least doing, um, doing you guys justice and all the members of this, this great county, uh, justice with how Bowen utilizes that. So here today to be as transparent as possible and thank you, uh, for that. And thank you for the partnership as we move forward in this county together. Um, in Marshall County, Bowen Health employs ninety eight individuals, residents. Served thirty five hundred patients and provided roughly fifty six thousand services oh, in our last fiscal year, which ended June thirty. A lot of those are skills coaching services. As Zach mentioned, great partnership in the schools that brings our skills coaches into the schools to work with, uh, students as well as adults in the community. Skills also works with DCS. A lot of involvement with CASA to, to handle those tough cases and get them plugged in. Um, other needs i- in the organization. One thing that's great about Bowen as a community mental health care center is that we've done the transition to also become a federally qualified healthcare center. So in addition to the inpatient hospital, which is a CMHC, um, part of the CMHC umbrella of the organization, transitional living. Um, as you know, Russell House is in Plymouth that we utilize for, uh, people to transition and gain independence and get back to becoming a contributing, uh, member of society and get their mental health and their physical health straight. Um, and then, uh, the skills coaching. So all those things are unique to a community mental health care center. On the federal federally qualified health center side of things, that's where you get into your outpatient therapy services, your outpatient psychiatric services, which may be a medical doctor or an advanced practice. Uh, registered nurse trained to do those things. Um, also physical health, so primary care providers. These are FQHC offerings that both of these things together, I see it and I know provide a great continuity of care and a robust offering. Um, so I think designating Bowen Health as a CMHC for this county is a good choice. We take that seriously. There are three members from Marshall County on the Bowen Health, um, Board of Directors. We have two from here in Plymouth. One in Bremen. Speaking of Bremen, we are getting ready to break ground on a brand new facility next to the Bremen Hospital. I know it is surveyed out there and people have been asking questions. I have not had a formal PR marketing plan. But I can tell you that I've seen the plans. It's in our fiscal budget and we do plan to break ground. Before that happens, we will be doing a ribbon cutting on a space in Bremen that we are beginning to lease. And we'll start to see patients, uh, the week of the eighteenth of August. So got this lease, put some monies in there to start delivering group services. We're putting primary care in there. We're putting psychiatric care in there as well as therapy. So the ability to do psychotherapy. Use that as a base to do some skill services, working with, uh, DCS for any visitations. And, um, working with local schools for, um, skill services. So there's a lot of crossover and a lot of things and, um, expansion that Bowen plans to do in Marshall County and, and feels very good about the ability to impact the community there and continue to impact the community in Plymouth. So with all that being said, you probably wanna know where does my money go, right? Specifically, how does that affect the Marshall County residents? Um, and I did bring some numbers here. On the, uh, CMHC side of things, um, our inpatient hospital specifically, we do operate that as a loss. That shows us a three point seven million dollar loss on, um, Bowen's overall operating, uh, statement.
CMH, community health, is that what?
Yeah, on the, uh, inpatient hospital, um, the, that shows us a three hundred, uh, three point seven million dollar loss. That's um, a tough place to attract, um, registered nurses who want to work. It's, uh, requires a little bit more incentives. It's very challenging, can also be rewarding, but nonetheless difficult twenty four seven, uh, facility. For Marshall County patients who had inpatient stays there, Bowen has given roughly one hundred and six thousand dollars in sliding fee discounts and or charity care to those individuals. So those are the ones that if falling between zero and two hundred percent of the federal poverty guideline, you fall into different gradients, um, how you qualify for supplemented or discounted fees. And then if you can handle those, um, or have the ability to pay for those discounted fees even, that's where charity care or fee assistance comes in for a full balance write-off. That was a hundred, uh, thousand dollars in the sliding fee discount charity care category. For transitional living group homes, there's more of these homes than just in Marshall County, but as I mentioned, Russell House is here. That operated at a one point five million dollar loss last fiscal year. For Marshall County patients, uh, or residents who resided at Russell House, the sliding fee discounts and our charity care offered and given to them was two hundred thousand dollars. And then in our clinics, and our clinic being the federally qualified health center side of things, um, three hundred and twenty three Marshall County resident, um, patients out of the thirty five hundred served at our outpatient facility clinic here in Plymouth, um, who qualified for the slide and or charity care received a hundred and eighty thousand dollars of sliding fee um, or full write-offs. If we take a look at those numbers, we get pretty close to, uh, being a little bit of, above the funding received uh, from the county and we thank you for that. Another tributing, any other operational losses county by county? I can just tell you that we take this partnership seriously and, um, use this money to fulfill the mission. And we remain dedicated to Marshall County, who we consider one of our core counties. There's five counties that designate Bowen Health as their, um, designated community mental health care center, um, board member representation. And, um, committed to having top-notch facilities and growth in each one of those counties before we ever look outside of those from a regional perspective. I can tell you that by the end of this fiscal year, we're looking at June, be late in our fiscal year, we'll be starting to convert, um, space in our clinic here to offer dental services. It was built with a gray space, um, to be determined what we put in there later. We had dental in mind and we had pharmacy in mind. Um, we currently have a partnership with a pharmacy where we have a pharmacy tech in there. Um, so we didn't feel the need to put a full community retail pharmacy in there and compete with the likes of Walgreens or CBS or Kroger, who else? Um, but we thought dental's the way to go. Our first foray into dental is coming September eighth when we open our new building in Warsaw. And working with that, uh, dentist there to get established in policies and procedures before, uh, he takes a step back and we start hiring other dentists and growing this program. So in short, doing our best to make sure there were good stewards of these resources that you have. Cause I know, um, some of you may think that could be better spent doing other things. I can tell you and that I've seen the differences it makes on a case by case, individual basis. And I know we're doing the right work and doing your, um, money good service and doing you folks good service. Continue to grow in this county and invest in this county and employ, um, people as well. And, um, looking forward to starting to find ways such as dental to engage even more people. This may be their first experience at Bowen Health to come for dental, or it may be a discussion during a, another, uh, visit about their opportunity and, and willingness to have those same sliding fee discount and charity care, um, options while, um, being seen when their insurance may not be attractive by other providers in the area or if they have no insurance at all. Um, regardless of inability to pay, we're here to serve your community.
Very good. Questions, comments?
Very pleased with your services because I know several people that use them. It's really staggering when it's thirty four hundred and ninety one patients served. Um, the building looks beautiful out there, but I'm really pleased to hear that maybe there could be pharmacy there. Because sometimes there seems to be a communication problem between the call-ins, between the people that look for you and to the pharmacies. And sometimes you get a call saying things are ready and they don't have the order, you know? But very pleased with that and wanna thank you on behalf of my family because some of my family has to use you.
Thank you, Mr. Masterson. I have received similar feedback to that and I can see the opportunities for improvement in that, um, particular areas as well. Look forward to addressing those things.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for the gentleman?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking it. Appreciate it.
Next up Gibson Insurance will provide us an update. Hello, please, uh, state your name for the folks listening online.
Well, good morning. My name is Yana Jones and I work at Gibson alongside Melinda Lemner and, uh, Ryan Colvin, you're probably familiar with.
Okay. Will you hear to update us or just give us your knowledge?
Uh, so I work alongside the county, uh, to put the health and benefits programs in place for the employees of the county. And as you probably know, in twenty twenty four, Marshall County moved from a fully insured contract to a self-funded contract. And a self-funded contract provides the county, um, more flexibility in the types of plan design we put into place, the programs we put into place, and ultimately to manage the budget and keep the employees as healthy as possible and provide the best programs at the best prices. So the self-funded capabilities are fantastic. And we wanted to highlight two of the programs that we put into place in twenty twenty four when the county moved self-funded, uh, which we're, we're really excited about. So the first program is called Sharks. So this was a pharmacy program that was put into place in twenty twenty four. And, uh, this provides alternative sourcing for certain high-cost specialty medications. Uh, some cost thousands and thousands of dollars. And through the Sharks program, they work with the manufacturers, they work with different sourcing programs to provide these drugs at low or no cost to both the employees and to the county. Uh, so when we put the initial program into place in twenty twenty four, so from January twenty twenty four through December thirty first, twenty twenty four, the Sharks program saved the county four hundred and eighty three thousand dollars. Uh, just in twenty twenty five. So we did enhance the program for twenty twenty five because we saw the program was successful. Uh, from January twenty twenty five through July of twenty twenty five, the program so far has saved three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Uh, so we're excited and hopeful that the savings in twenty twenty five will be significantly more than twenty twenty four. So in total, through January, when we went self-funded, this pharmacy program has saved the county eight hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. Uh, so that's the first program. And again, you, you can't utilize these Sharks programs or different programs we're talking about if you had remained fully insured. Uh, so the second program is called Kiss X. So this is a program that, uh, provides surgical bundled contracts. So when an employee or a member needs to have a surgery, they can call in to Kiss X, they'll work with a nurse coordinator and they can help steer them towards a high value but lower cost provider. Uh, in twenty twenty four, this provided the county twenty one thousand approximately in savings. And so far through July of twenty twenty five, the program has provided thirty thousand dollars in savings. So that Kiss X program, uh, in total, has provided about fifty one thousand dollars in savings so far. And again, this is not trying to transition costs from the county to the employee. This contract actually allows for zero to very low cost for members to get these surgeries if they need them. And, and that's our goal is to lower the overall budget for both employees and the county. Uh, so in total, those two programs so far from January of twenty twenty four to July of twenty twenty five has been about eight hundred and sixty four thousand dollars in savings. Anything you wanted to add?
Is that savings to the county government or savings to everybody involved, the patients as well? I'm just.
The eight hundred and sixty four thousand is the gross cost, so to the entire plan. So some of that is gonna be to the members, the ones who are actually getting the care and some of that is to the county.
Okay. Do you have any idea what those percentages are out of curiosity?
Uh, I can follow, we can certainly follow up on that, but the savings is significant to both sides. Um, for the members, the Sharks program for almost everyone is no cost. So the employees are receiving their drugs at no cost. And same thing with the Kiss X program. So significant cost to the members, but we can follow up with the exact, uh, split.
Okay. Any questions on these two particular portions, uh?
No.
Thank you.
Do you have any other information for us? Do you have any other information for us to share or?
Well, we are never just satisfied with the programs we put into place. So for twenty twenty-six, we're evaluating additional programs that we're gonna. Potentially put in place. We have a pilot program in place right now, which we've started to see some initial success on, so. Always continuing to work on behalf of the county and we do appreciate the partnership. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, ladies. Next up. Is the sheriff with the commissary report.
Matt Hassel, sheriff. Just here to. Provide you with the statutory requirement on the commissary firm. At this, at this point in time, it's a semi-annual report of receipts and disbursements.
So you started the year with eighty-nine point three. Just rounding this and you ended at eighty, is it eighty-one or I can't read it?
Ninety.
Ninety-one?
Yes.
So your cash balance went up approximately eight thousand six hundred dollars-ish. Okay. Any questions for the sheriff on his report? We just have to. Approve that it was presented today. Okay. Okay, motion to approve the report to the county council is presented by the sheriff. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Shaddick, second by Mr. Masterson, is a discussion. Seeing none, those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
The only up, the only update I'm gonna give you is the legislators, you know, whenever they meet, um legislator, you know, you've been there. They always gotta change something. So now you'll get this report quarterly.
Okay.
See you more often.
We like seeing you, yeah, okay. All right, let's get back to where we were on the agenda. I understand Stan, you're gonna. Mr. Klotz, you're gonna talk about the EMA grant request and me and Jack.
Stan Klotz, Marshall County Commissioner. And I'll just update you a little bit. You see, I don't have the paperwork in front of me, but Jack had a doctor's appointment for his new baby this morning, so. There was a lot of talk. We weren't sure if this was even gonna be a grant be available. There was talk about it could be pulled. They come up at the last minute and. Approved the grant again for at least one more year. It's, I think up to half, it's half of the salary up to thirty thousand dollars, I believe is what it is. What the grant says, so we'd like to go ahead and have Jack apply for that.
Okay. To let the other members know, this is just a. Annual grant that we've approved for many, many years because of Stan presented, as you can see in the grant.
Right.
We get up to thirty thousand dollars reimbursement for a salary.
Yeah, I think it's half with a maximum thirty thousand of the base salary.
It'll be maxed out at thirty.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Questions for Stan? Is there a motion to approve the grant?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Compton, second by Mrs. Johnson, is a discussion. Seeing none, those in favor of approving the grant will say aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Request.
Thank you.
Okay. Got some papers shuffled around here, give me a second. Council items, let's start off with some additional appropriations. We have a request for an autopsy. Increase of thirty thousand dollars out of the general fund. The general fund does have a healthy amount of money. I would like to at some point. Compare the cost today versus a few years ago because when I first got here, this expense item was a lot less, but.
Can I, can I say something?
Absolutely.
I spoke to our coroner, Mr. Byers, and he. I just like him. I just like him, but he tries not to do autopsies unless it's necessary. But it's suggested if there's drug use or suspected drug use that an autopsy needs to be done. He's kind of alarmed by the number of autopsies that we've needed to do. He's been wonderful in sending us monthly reports, so we get monthly reports so we can see what's going on. It's not like this is a surprise. Oh, suddenly, you know, it's been, it's been happening. And in his, when he filed, he just said an extraordinary number of autopsies in the first half of twenty twenty-five nineteen. As of July sixth, twenty twenty-five, we'll need the additional to continue through the remaining twenty twenty-five. With seventy-three hundred remaining in his budget, that's for two autopsies, autopsies. So seventy-three hundred covers two autopsies, so, yeah.
Wish it all be a couple thousand dollars.
I know, I know.
Is there a motion to approve the request?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Cox, second by Mr. Masterson, is your discussion? Okay, the motion is to increase the line item for autopsy by thirty thousand dollars. Those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Lit special purpose wants to fund the insurance, so it was probably a little under budget last year. Healthy balance in the lit fund, I think roughly five point two million dollars. Is there a motion to approve? So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Shaddick, second by Mrs. Cox, is our discussion. Seeing none, those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Public Health Fund eight one one eight, I would like to increase some appropriations for wages for emergency preparedness coordinator. And the social security that goes with it and the amount of twenty thousand dollars. Is there a motion?
So moved, second.
Motion by Mrs. Johnson, second by Mrs. Cox, is a discussion. Seeing none, those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries. We are done with additionals. We're doing transfers, first item up. We'll just take both of these en masse. We have a transfer from office supplies to wages absentee voter board for a thousand and a transfer from legal advertising. To wages absentee voter board for five hundred totaling fifteen hundred dollars and the transfer is a motion.
Summit.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Cox, second by Mr. Masterson to approve the transfers of fifteen hundred dollars, those in, is our discussion. Seeing none, those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Lit special purpose. Stan, I'm curious, what, what are you guys repairing for a hundred thousand dollars over there? It's probably in the transfer. Do you know what that is? Sheriff, sheriff's got it. caulking, okay.
Matt Hassel, sheriff. If you recall, last year, we had the caulking and the, of the building, the doors and the windows. And that project was started, well, it didn't get completed till about last month. But in the, under the machinery and equipment. Last fall, you guys let me commit us to buying the HVAC unit that replaced over the administration building. By buying that unit, while we still could, you saved a hundred thousand dollars. But there was a hundred, there was two hundred and fifty put in the budget. If you'll see, we've already paid off for that unit, that unit's up and running, doing great. It cost us actually a hundred and forty-four thousand eight hundred dollars. So I'm transferring that hundred thousand to cover the cost of that. Caulking because it was in the budget last year, but it didn't get done last year, so instead of coming for an additional, I. Found a way we could transfer the money.
We like that.
Thank you. Thank you for this. I think this is a pretty easy one. Is there a motion to approve?
Summit.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Cox, second by Mr. Shaddick, is your discussion? Those in favor, seeing none, those in favor of the transfer of a hundred thousand dollars will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, sheriff, for explaining that.
Thank you.
MBH wages and labor seasonal mowing supervisor transfer into heavy equipment operator part-time of ten thousand dollars, is there a motion?
Summit.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Cox, second by Mr. Masterson. To transfer ten thousand dollars as presented is their discussion.
This was kind of uncovered, we subcontract, we contract that our mowing. What's the supervising of this?
I don't know if it's just labeled in a different description. I'm sure there's a line item, I haven't looked at that. Angie or Tori, would you have an idea on that? I mean, he asked a question, are we subcontracting, is that you said Brandon?
Yeah, we contract that.
Yeah, they contracted that out. I, I don't know why it was budgeted that place. Yeah, I have no idea why it was budgeted.
Well, it is a, it is a line item though, I mean it's.
Jason's here, you might have a better explanation, which I see him back there.
State your name real quick.
Highway Department. Marshall County Highway Department. What we ended up doing with that was we did, we did subcontract out the mowing. That part-time person done a lot of our. Roadside mowing as far as what we consider highways, North Michigan, South Michigan, Pioneer, Lincoln Way and those type. This year, we ended up putting someone in for those at a very reasonable rate. So out of that, we're transferring that money into cover part-time.
I remember that. Okay, thank you for the explanation. Is there further discussion? We have a motion to approve the transfer of ten thousand dollars. Those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Again, another transfer, bituminous to bituminous restricted, it basically going from the. Unrestricted to restricted, it's a basic transfer, forty-six thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents, is there a motion to approve? So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Shaddick, second by Mr. Masterson, is your discussion? Seeing none, those in favor of the transfer will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries. We have six or seven, we can take in mass, I will read them. And if you have any that you want to single out, we can look at those, but personnel liabilities in solid waste budget to retirement of six thousand. Is there transfers again, personal liabilities to technology for two thousand seventy-nine dollars and fifty-four cents, office and warehouse supplies transfer into postage. Twenty-five, or two hundred and fifty dollars, printing and outreach transferred into security and software, three thousand one hundred dollars. Item grant funds transferred into tires of five thousand dollars, item grant funds of thirty-two hundred dollars transferred into education and training. Building and grounds transferred to utility of twelve hundred dollars. Electronics of three thousand dollars transferred into utilities. Is there any single item you want to take out, look at? Is there a motion to approve the seven or eight items in mass?
So moved, second.
Motion by Mrs. Johnson, second by Mrs. Cox, is a further discussion? Chair sees none, those in favor of the transfer will say aye.
Aye.
Motion, are those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Okay. We have minutes from the special meeting as well, but let's go over the regular minutes, we'll do that one. Minutes from the July fourteenth meeting, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. Masterson moved, second, Mr. Shaddick, is your discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, those in favor of approving the minutes will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries. We do have special minutes. You want to bring those up or?
Yeah, the July thirtieth special minutes, I think Tori's, she has got them there.
As you recall, we met, approved. A future appropriation request for ninety-seven thousand five hundred dollars out of Q cap to go toward the purchase of a pothole. Patcher, that's what the minutes was about. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Compton, second by Mr. Shaddick to approve the minutes, is your discussion? Chair sees none, those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries, Labim. Law invoice. One thousand three hundred and twenty dollars, you can see the details there of the work. Is there a motion to approve the invoice as presented?
Summit.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Cox, second by Mrs. Johnson, is there further discussion?
What's the, you hadn't attended the last meeting. And your bill is for it. It says, attend council meeting.
I still met with the members of the council and discussed beforehand.
All right, I just noticed you said you attended the council meeting, so I don't know if there's an adjustment you need to make to the billing or not.
Before the council meeting, we typically meet with.
Right, so the times, right, I mean, I didn't attend the meeting, but the time.
The president and the vice president meet and we go over and talk about any issues that we may have, and we still have that meeting.
All right. I didn't know that was called the council meeting.
Okay. Well, I mean, I know that you did not attend, obviously in saving us money at the one dollar or the hour and a half, it says. Reviewing state board of account finding, work on issues for funding sources, work on issues of financial feasibility of sewer, prepare for and attend council meeting. I, I'm just gonna assume the language should have been stricken.
We didn't, yeah, obviously didn't attend the meeting, but we did the pre-meeting.
Did you do the hour and a half of work?
I did.
Okay.
It was actually more than an hour and a half, but you know.
Okay. I think, you know. So I'll just, I'll just make a motion to strike the word attend council meeting and. Just strike it, okay? And then what's that?
Prepare for.
Prepare for, okay. So my motion is to just strike for transparency, the words attend and replace it with prepare. And we'll put that in the invoice presented, is there a second?
Yes.
Okay. Again, my motion was to strike the word attend and replace it with prepare, is your discussion? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries now. Again, the motion, I think, was made. We probably should have got back to that, but the motion was made to approve. The invoice and of one thousand three hundred and twenty dollars, is your discussion on the invoice dollar amount? Chair sees none, those in favor of the motion to approve the dollar amount of one thousand three hundred and twenty dollars, or. One thousand three hundred and twenty dollars, correct, will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Okay, getting back to the agenda. Okay, so public input, let's, let's do this, we're gonna return to our sewer discussion, however. Is there anything non-sewer related that a member of the public would like to discuss? Okay, seeing none. If there's any sewer public input, we'll, we'll go with that and return to the council discussion. Is there any public sewer? Comments from any of the members? Come forward, please.
Yeah, I have a form up there, if anybody who speaks during public comment, I have your information, but everybody could please sign the form.
Okay.
So we can get it right for the minutes.
Okay.
I haven't signed it anyhow or not.
We'll get you later.
One-two-zero-nine-four Peach Road, Plymouth.
Okay.
Since we were discussing the money spent by the sewer board. Myself and a small group of people have been out canvassing the different areas that the sewer is going to affect. And one of the concerns is if this sewer does get stopped, which eighty to eighty-five percent of people we contact is against the sewer. And one of the biggest concerns is what's going to happen if this sewer is stopped? Who's going to pay this money back? Because Tom McFadden, at one of the board meetings, said that the people affected at the lakes will be paying it back. And so the people we've talked into, their attitude is, we didn't let these people that were appointed, we didn't approve their spending money. And we didn't approve any of that. Why are we on the hook? Now, I understand that you're considering that the whole county's on the hook for this, not that particular group of residents, which is a good thing to hear. Because that is one of our concerns. Another issue I wasn't going to bring up, but I will respond to, Mr. Compton brought up about these costs and everything that are being thrown out. In JPR's preliminary engineering report and similar information, they bring up the fact that, I shouldn't say fact, they bring up numbers. They're saying to abandon your system is going to be about twenty-five hundred dollars. I got a quote from a septic contractor to just abandon my tank and it was twenty-eight hundred dollars. JPR says it's twelve to twenty dollars per linial foot to dig a trench from your house out to the line. I talked to several contractors. They won't bring out equipment for that kind of money. I talked to somebody about digging a fifty-foot trench at my house several years ago. It was fifteen hundred dollars to dig fifty feet. Okay, that was several years ago. So I went through their thing and there's like three hundred and fifty to five hundred dollars to abandon your tank. Okay, there again, I just said, I got quoted twenty-eight hundred dollars. They don't put in anything for electrical. I've talked to some electrical contractors. If you have to have a thirty-amp breaker put in your panel and you don't have room for your panel. Now you have to have a sub-panel or have to get things repaired. It could be several thousand dollars. So twenty-eight hundred dollars, several thousand dollars for electrical potentially. Digging out from the house to the, to the street is going to be several thousand dollars. You're looking at a minimum of six thousand dollars, and I'm being conservative. So, you know, in numbers, I've talked to people, Judge Colvin, as a matter of fact, told me it was going to be fifteen to twenty thousand for his. Looking at my house, it's going to be twelve to fifteen for me, okay? And I have pretty simple, but I got a wooden deck. It's got to be taken up, some hand digging, et cetera. People that have houses where they got to come from around the back of the house out to the street, have to put in a pump, additional electric. And now you're trenching around the house and up, you're raising the cost. And I've got a neighbor whose, whose house is real close to the street. It's going to be a minimum of six thousand dollars for him. So these numbers that are all over the place are fairly accurate. They're not even, JPR's number isn't, what the sewer board is, is not even close. So people we've talked to are concerned that if it does go through, there are people that are disabled, unemployed. I shouldn't say unemployed, on restricted income. They're retired. There's families out there that are just barely making it. People will be forced to sell their homes. People are already selling their homes. The sewer thing is, is not needed. It's not a matter of when we're going to have a sewer because we don't have to have sewer. There are EPA studies years ago of case studies of, of different communities that have come in with a majority of septic systems. And they looked at whether it's a sewer or whether it's a septic. You know, do they repair the septic? Do they bring them up to speed? Do they put in new technology? Do they bring in a sewer system? They elected to go without sewer systems because of the cost. They elected to repair and, and fix the septic systems that were there. And most of the time, it is an aerobic system because that is the same system that our waste water treatment plant uses is aerobics. That's what they all use. Over the years, they've adapted this aerobic treatment system down to the point where they can put it in a small tank and put it in your backyard. Now you have your own waste treatment plant. State of Indiana accepts that. If you put in aerobic treatment syst, tank, it goes right behind your existing tank and it ties into your drain field. If your drain field isn't completely failed, the aerobic system helps start repairing that. If you don't tear that up, that gets really argument that the health department and the sewer board uses to say you can't put in a new system. You don't have to tear that system out. If you don't tear out the drain field and put in aerobic system, you can repair that, and there's other methods. You put in aerobic system, your required, your requirement for drain field is decreased thirty percent. So there are options that the state of Indiana accepts that our sewer board never considered. They said they considered an aerobic treatment plant that was never anything but sewer. I've been through this PER several times. I just went through it all this last week and made notes of all the misinformation that JPR presented to IDEM. The water study that was done is the Yellow River. The Yellow River Water Study stops north of Jefferson Street. It doesn't even go south of town. Half of Plymouth's not even included in the water study that they reference to. The lakes never tie into the Yellow River. It's two miles one direction, two miles the other direction. And those lakes drain out toward Knox and they don't tie into the Yellow River. So all this is BS, okay? The water study, everything else, it's all BS. So we appreciate everybody here's concern. We appreciate your support. And we appreciate anything you do to help our commissioners stop this thing. And we also appreciate your attitude that this group of six hundred people, you might say, is not going to be on the hook for the million dollars. We don't feel it's our responsibility because we didn't vote for these people. We didn't have any say-so in this. And the two million dollars, regardless of whether they got that two million dollars or not, they would have spent a million dollars regardless. They've been denied funding twice. First, they were twenty-two on the list. They took eleven. Now they're forty-two on the list. They took nine or eleven. They're not getting any closer to the list or to funding. They're getting further. So I, I, you know.
There's going to be probably a lot of questions and a lot of discussion here in the next few minutes. I do want to ask you one quick question on the cost. It was estimated early on, it'd be seventy-five to eighty-five dollars of cost. What, what is it right now, the max, two-twenty-five-ish estimate?
Yes, it's around the two-twenty-five.
It does not include any electrical monthly charge?
It's just monthly super fee. So in JPR's original proposal, they estimated the project roughly around twenty-two million dollars. They said if they got seventy-five percent funding, sixteen million, okay, and, and grants, I should say. If they got sixteen million grants out of that twenty-two million, it was going to be right around a hundred dollars a month. That was the only way it was going to be a hundred dollars a month, was sixteen million or seventy-five percent grant money. They went for SRF funding. Now, I, I looked all over SRF's site and they talk about funding. They don't talk about grants. They talk about loans, low-interest loans, and then they refer back to IDM for grants. And IDM says that, you know, different qualifications, but at twenty-two million, they also in their proposal, if they didn't get any grant money, it was going to be around two-hundred-and-ten dollars or so per month for sewer charge only. They put that in their own information right up front. Then there was a report out by, you know, that they, I think it was March or something, that they went through numbers and Baker Tilly had some numbers. Anyhow, it was two-twenty a month if there was no grant money. But, and I asked them in March, stop spending money, get this under control, figure out what's going on, whether it's needed or not. If there's other options or not, I was plateaued. It's going to go through regardless. I was told that more than once. So that's a sewer was going through regardless. I asked if we petitioned, if that would have anything, do anything. McFadden told me, no, the sewer was going through. So, and the people out there, the majority of the people, I, and, and they make these numbers that there's so many failing, that there's so much of a need. There's no numbers to prove any of this. It's all conjecture, you know? That's what irritates, I, you can tell I'm wound up and I apologize. It just boils my blood because I go out. And we've been talking to people and so many people, it's like, I don't need this. And so many people are saying, mine's fine. I don't need it. I'm sure I can get exemption. I don't like the way it's being presented and the way people are treated and going to be forced out of their houses. I'm not for it. And like I said, eighty to eighty-five percent of the people we talked to are not for it. And we've gone back again and again and again, and they were asked to pick up people that aren't home. There's weekenders, there's people that just are out, there's people that are renters, that are at houses that are vacant, that no one lives in. There's properties that used to have a house that now that house is gone. And they're all included in this big survey, you know, that how many people are out there and what it's going to cost. But majority of people don't want this and, and they're afraid that if, if they get it stopped and they want it stopped, who's going to pay for it? It, it comes right down to where's the money going to come from? Regardless of whether they were going to get two million or three million, they've spent a million dollars and have nothing to show. Nothing. So we appreciate any support from the council that we can get.
Real, real quick, let's establish some ground rules. If Mr. Wood would take questions, you know, that'd be great. After that, anyone else who wants to come up and maybe make a statement, you can make that. But does anyone have any comments about what he said? Any questions? I mean, you want to chime in?
Bill.
Yes.
I was kind of disappointed because a lot of people threw me under the bus and said that I was totally for this program. Well, I'm a veteran and I'm elderly and I own property and I'm real proud. And I said from day one, if this is cost-effective and I could hook at a reasonable fee and that fee was going to be a hundred dollars a month or less, that I was for that, even though I have a new system at the house that I own. And then there's some other misinformation saying that that's an investment property. Nothing's further than truth. I have two disabled nephews that I created a home for, and that is where they are and they do their best to take care of that. And obviously, I didn't want to eat another twenty thousand dollars and two hundred dollars a month for the fees. But I was disappointed because Facebook can be an either thing. And I was throwing under the bus saying that I was taking a neutral position, but I don't know any of the numbers. I don't even know that. And I've, I've never lied to you.
I never lied to me and I've never had a problem with you.
And I've, I've known you for a long time. You're, you're ladies and wonderful people. But, you know, when you have a property and you have a functioning system, yeah, I could have got a waiver, but I said from day one. But the reason I mentioned this morning about the joint meeting being with the health department is because I wanted to know a clarification on what is acceptable at a state level versus what's acceptable at a local level. And I think that that's a legitimate question, you know, I do.
There was a law passed a couple of years ago that says the regs that are approved by the state, the health departments have to take.
They can't be any stricter.
The health department cannot be more restrictive than the state regs. And the state regs include all kinds of additional systems that we are not used to or traditionally used in northern Indiana. So there's a, there are a lot of options now.
So you understand why I'm there.
And I didn't bring up names because I don't want to.
No, but my name is on.
And it will be removed, I promise you.
Because.
But, and I didn't bring that up at this meeting because I know people have different positions and I didn't want to point anybody out. I just wanted to answer questions.
No, and I understand.
And, and like you said, you and I have been on a good relationship and I still don't have a problem with whatever your position is for or against. I still don't have a problem.
Well, I just didn't want people to think that I was going to go out there, that I was for something that was a twenty thousand dollar hookup and two hundred dollars. And I, because you know what? I'm elderly and I'm a veteran and I want to keep my house and I want my nephews to keep those too. But if it's something that's cost-effective and the people would look at it and they would agree to that, that's something totally different. But thank you.
And, and I agree, the health department should be involved in any discussions. I, 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 I don't think they're aware of all the opportunities or all the new technology that's available. And I also think there's a little, they're for the sewer. And, and I have a neighbor who's a good friend and she had a friend who applied for a permit for her septic. And she was told that she can just pump and haul until the sewer comes in. And she was basically almost denied that, but the person had to insist they got their permit. And when they finally got the permit, they didn't use one of the approved contractors from the health department. So that health department person was out there and bird-dogged that whole installation, which is my opinion harassment.
Yeah.
But at any rate, I think that health department needs educated as to the law and what systems are available and approved by the state. Because there is a lot of new stuff. There's aerobic piping that can go in. There's aerobic tanks that can go in. By the end of the year, there will be an aerobic insert that can go in a tank so you don't have to, you know, add another tank. If you put an aerobic system in and you just, it's between your main tank and your field drain. You know, that starts to help improve that, that drain field because of the aerobic bacteria that's created. And there's a drip system, so if you have a drain field that's starting to fail, it's not failed, you don't have to rip it up. That gets rid of that, like I say, that gets rid of that whole conversation about where do you put a new one? You don't have to if you don't rip that drain field up. But they have a drip system that you can add to that and, and help compensate for part of that. And there's a calculation they use to say, okay, you know, you need so much drip system to add to that. So there are options that don't require sewer. And real quick, so two years ago was twenty-two million dollars and today's row is probably twenty-five to twenty-eight million for that system, for the sewer system. That means in those six hundred homes, every one of them could spend roughly forty thousand dollars each, even on average, okay? Forty thousand to pay for a sewer system. There's no way you're going to average forty thousand dollars a house out there. It would, yeah, I would say if you averaged twenty, you would be lucky because some people are going to be simpler than others, okay? But still, the sewer system is way more costly than fixing the problem we have. Like I said, the EPA study on these different communities, they fixed their septic systems. And then they went back and, and they went and said, what's our improvement to our water quality in our area? And it was always improvements by keeping the septic, you know? Septics are here to stay and EPA even says that, that, you know, I meant to, instead of just getting rid of them, find ways to, to, you know, replace them or repair them. But replace them with a new system that's new technology. Don't just, you know, put the burden on people.
So there's only, there, there's a list of people who can do these inspections? Because when I had a conversation with health department, asking if someone in the health department did them, they said, no, that they actually had a list of names for someone to get ahold of to, on their septic's being inspected. Does anybody have a list of anybody who's had their septic systems actually inspected? Have you talked to anybody that has actually got proof of the inspection that they've had?
So I've talked to people that said they've had their tanks inspected when they bought their house and I'm sure that's a different inspection. But for what the health department is going to want for a, an exemption inspection, I'm, I'm sure it's a little different. But I haven't talked to anybody that's used these three that are on that county's list. But the state says anybody in the state that's approved to do installation or inspection or design is approved anywhere in the state at all. So if somebody in a different county or different area wants to come over here and do it, all they have to do is pay the county business fees to be, you know, an approved business to work in the county, and they're acceptable. So supposedly, there's only like three on their list now that have paid that fee. But if there was a requirement, I guarantee you, there'd be more inspectors come over here. Or if somebody said, look, I'll pay that two hundred dollars or whatever it is. I don't know what that fee is. But it's not that there's only three, there's only three, I guess, that have paid the fee to work in the county. But wherever in the state they are, they can work in this county as long as they pay that business fee, you know? But the state says if you're approved in the state, you're approved anywhere.
That was one of the changes when they made the, the septic system rule statewide, is any of the septic contractors that are approved in any of the counties can work in any others. So you, I mean, there's a lot up in St. Joe. There's a lot up in La Porte, a lot in Elkhart, and they can all come down and, and do the inspections, the installs.
There, there's a full sheet that, that the county health department puts out, that full sheet of approved contractors to install. But the, the list of inspectors that the county health board has is, is three the last I saw. But like I say, that doesn't mean there's only three that can do it. There's, you know, so there are more.
Yeah.
Bill, when I get an inspection in the county like that, I always have an inspector come in from an installer. And I do that for a reason because the people that come in that do the inspections, they'll defer to, then you call the professional. So, you know.
Yeah.
In my, in my business, we actually hire people that do the installations and we bring them in from other counties.
Yeah, and I think the three people that are on the list for the county. And I think the three people that are on the list for the county are installers. Stone is one, Kent Excavating is one, I think Kent is, and, you know, and there's one more, I can't think of who it is, but there's, there's three and I, I think all three are installers. I, I talked to, um, John Creed, I had him out and pumped my tank a couple weeks, a couple months ago. And, um, you know, he didn't see a problem with my system and, you know, and, you know, we talked basically and I asked him some of these numbers that I've quoted, you know, and, and he pretty much confirmed what I got from other people as far as, uh, pumping a tank or, or abandoning a tank. And like I say, if JPR says it's five hundred dollars to abandon and I got a quote for twenty eight hundred dollars, that tells me their numbers are way out of skew, you know? And that's how I have found their numbers to be on everything when I go back and check different things. So, just like for example, they said there's two thirds of the permits, uh, are the, the homes out in that area don't have permits. And that, but on the bottom of their little thing, they said they only went back twenty years in records. Well, the records go back to the sixties, so there's sixty years of records, but they only went back twenty years. So, you know, they're missing, you know, sixty percent of the records, but they only went back twenty years. And, you know, my house is in nineteen seventy eight and when I bought my house, I got a copy of my septic permit, but it's back past their twenty years. So, what does that tell you? You know, they didn't do a complete search, they're making assumptions that aren't true. They're saying that there's a lot of systems failing and, and a lot of these systems weren't installed properly, et cetera. That's not true, just because there's no permit on record does that mean it's true? You know, so, uh, JPR made a lot of assumptions in my mind that were misleading or false. And so, there's a lot of misinformation out there based on that. I've been doing my best to present honest, true information. And if anybody wants to challenge it, I'm more than willing to sit down and show where I get my numbers and where I get my figures and where I get my information. So, I mean, anytime somebody wants to sit down, I'm willing. Uh, thank you. So I, I'll answer any questions anytime you can call me.
Again, there'll be an opportunity for us to weigh in separately, cause I actually wanna do that after you guys, uh, testify. Does anyone else have any questions or comments for Bill?
I do appreciate your information and that, I, I, I enjoy that much more than just trying to beat up on people to disagree, so that, that's where, that's where my whole problem comes in.
And I appreciate it. And, and, you know, our-
I, I, I kinda in line with, uh, Mr. Masterson that, um, you know, if it's twenty thousand or two hundred dollars a month, I, I, I think we need to back off and, and see where we can align it, but we don't know what the state is gonna, uh, but, you know, we're still in that system to be able to receive grants and our low interest loans as well. But, and I, 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 I think we're, um, you know, I, I just, and I, I, I love the idea that we're gonna have, uh, some further meetings that collaborate.
And anytime you want me to attend any of these things, I'm more than willing. I mean, or I can, or I can work with AK Industries, they're here in town and that's why I use them is what, they got one of the best systems on the market and they're willing to present too. So, um, they've, they've promised me any resources or any help they can be of, that they would be more than willing to help. So, any questions or anything from them?
Okay. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Woodward?
Thanks, Bill.
Okay.
Thank you, Bill.
We really do appreciate everything you do, not just the sewer part thing, but we really do appreciate everything you do and we appreciate your concern for us and if this does stop any help you can give us to alleviate us paying too much of our pockets.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other member of the public that would like to speak on this, sir? Please come forward, obviously, state your name and where you live. Oh, I'm so sorry. Where's the sign up sheet?
It's, I've got it there.
Thank you, thank you.
Um, I'm Nelson Washburn, seven eighteen Lake Avenue, Plymouth. And, uh, I'm approaching this whole thing at a, at a different angle.
Um, I'm sorry, what was your first name?
Nelson Washburn.
Okay.
Um, all of you take a note to uphold the constitution. And I strongly feel that this Marsha County Sewer Board is not following the constitution. Amendment four, or amendment fourteen, section one reads, "No state shall make or enforce any law which shall abridge the privileges or immunities of citizens in the United States, nor shall any state deprive any person of life, liberty, or property without due process of law, nor deny any person within its jurisdiction the equal protection of laws." The state constitution, bill of rights, section one states, "The people have at all times and indefensible right to alter and reform their government." This sentence from the state constitution seems to me to tell us that we can alter or reform the sewer district. They seem to think they have complete control over us and they appear to think that we, the people, have no say so in what they do. They're not transparent and they know, not give us simple answers, yes or no, to our questions. This looks to me to be a communistic way of, of, not a democratic one. I urge you to take this constitut, yes, into consideration. Everything about the Marsha County Regional Sewer District to me is unconstitutional. Um, I went out, I'm going, doing the survey with Bill, I agree with everything he says. And I had one person say, "I agree with this sewer system, I think it needs to be done, but I don't agree with the way it's being handled." And signed the petition, you know, and, and, and that, that was a lot to me right there. Um, and the other thing I heard, uh, somebody say there should be an environmental impact study done on this countywide sewer system, because that's what they want, there's thirteen districts countywide, as to the water table of county. If the water from our septic don't go back into the ground, what's gonna happen to the water table of county? What's gonna happen to the lake levels? Is it, you know, uh, I think something like that we should take into consideration also, but I don't know how to go about getting that done. That's all I got, thank you.
Well, I think you hit on something I'd like to talk about just briefly. I think sewer, you know, for cities and, and towns, it has merit. I mean, I think sewer even has merit outside of cities and towns, but obviously, septic has merit too. And I think we all can agree that, you know, uh, it doesn't really matter where we flush the toilet, you know? We just wanna make sure that the system that we have makes sense. And I mean, Mr. Woodward has, uh, put forward, uh, an argument that it doesn't make sense. I'll just be upfront with you. I voted against the sewer district three years ago because I didn't think that it made sense as a county. Perhaps the lakes could have used it, but the more and more, uh, I've learned, I don't think the lakes use it. I'll, I'll comment more on that, but let's, I'll just remember that you can be for sewer and be a good guy and you can be, you know, against sewer and be a good guy, so let's keep that in mind.
I agree with that totally, but like I say, my, my take on, my side of the story is the whole thing's unconstitutional. They think they have no, they have complete authority over the county. They feel they have more authority over you people and the commissioners and it's just not right.
Okay.
Well, once upon a time, they thought they had oversight and then when they tried getting the oversight, they said, uh, we don't answer to you. So now we're in the mess we're in. Cause on the, uh, March twelfth, uh, sewer board meeting, uh, they were asked, why would we do to stop this? And they were told to see the commissioners and the council. And then when the commissioners and when we started getting the phone calls and people complaining on, on the, on the commissioners board and, and, uh, we as council members and we're trying to stop this, they don't want the oversight, so now we're challenging that in court. They'll continue to go further in that, cause they don't have any money and fight this, but, uh, we're with you.
Well, I'm with you guys too, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other member of the public that would like to come up and speak? Okay, seeing none. Um, again, I'd like to just revisit this as a, as a body. Um, thoughts about sewer that you would like to get out? We're gonna probably have a meeting here going forward, but while we have the opportunity, it's on the, uh, table right now to discuss, does anyone wanna have any comments about sewer? I, I'm gonna have a few, but, uh, somebody else have any comments? Discussion?
Uh, I'll, I'll just-
Yeah.
Personally, um, I, I would like to, uh, this was created because of the commissioners and the council, uh, years ago, and not most of our current members, but some, um, voted for the institution of, uh, petitioning IDAM in the state to have a regional sewer district. I'd, I'd be interested in, uh, the both boards coming together and petition, um, potentially petitioning to end the sewer district or at least make changes and revisit it at a later time. I think having a, an appointed board that has the ability to go in the amount of debt that this board has, they have no income, that is foolish. I don't think, um, the, the people who, who are on the council and commissioners probably knew at the moment that this is something that can be done. I know some of our state officials have already said they didn't even know that this board can acquire this kind of debt. It's irresponsible, um, and so, I, that, that's my personal take. Uh, I think if, if there is gonna be one, it needs to be completely restructured where the people's money cannot be, uh, spent, like, like the gentleman said, uh, you know, I didn't vote for this, um, well, but we're all gonna be on the hook for it, so.
And they have no consequences.
No consequences.
Because they're an appointed board, but they're refusing to be overseen by the commissioners. Um, and they're a commissioner's appointment, but they refuse to have any sort of oversight and so they're an appointed board with absolutely no consequences.
Well, we are elected and we have an appointment on the board, the commissioners are elected, they have five appointments, uh, the mayor of Plymouth, I believe, has some appointments. So we have a seven-member board. Um, you know, going back to this discussion when it came across, uh, my desk, so to speak, um, we were told it was gonna cost seventy five to eighty five dollars a month. And this was February twenty first, two thousand twenty one. And I think the big driving factor in the whole debate is if sewer costs fifty bucks a month or seventy five or eighty five, you're not gonna get a lot of opposition, you may. Uh, there are some liberty reasons why you wouldn't want sewer, but now we're being told it could potentially cost two hundred and twenty five dollars a month, there's hookup fees, there's electrical, uh, uh, upgrades. And, and I think cost is a huge factor in this. Um, this is disturbing and I, I don't believe I'm, I'm incorrect when I'm stating this. On February twenty first, there was a public meeting and JPR had, uh, you know, announced it'd be roughly seventy five to eighty five a month. Uh, two weeks later, the county commissioners and the county council voted for the petition, not knowing that it could potentially be two hundred and eight dollars a month. On April second, Baker Tilly, uh, disclosed some financial, uh, analysis showing it'd be two hundred and eight dollars a month. One month after we voted, I just wonder if the members had known it could be two hundred and eight dollars a month, would their votes still be, uh, uh, to approve? That is a big, uh, factor, I think, in the overall sewer district. I think the sewer district was formed, uh, on a flawed study. Uh, there was E. coli, uh, in the Yellow River, which I will, uh, uh, grant, uh, but then they used four, only four samples to try to differentiate human E. coli versus animal E. coli. Animal, obviously, would be from runoff, presumably from farms. Of the four, uh, samples, they stated fifty percent or more coming from human E. coli. Well, that sounds ominous. But when you go look at the site data, actually seventy five percent of the E. coli was at such low levels, it was irrelevant. So I could look at the data and say, the three out of four samples showed that the amount of human E. coli was actually well, well within the safe range. Um, one of the other samples had human E. coli just barely over the threshold for unsafe, you know, recreational use. But does that mean that septic is guilty as charged? Where is the E. coli coming from? There's multiple sources in which human E. coli could, could come from. We know for sure it's actually comes from sewer. When you have a combined sewer overflow, the city of Plymouth is telling us they don't have the capacity to push, uh, all the wastewater through the treatment plant, so it has to go in the river. So ironically, the lakes district would be pumping their sewage back to a wastewater treatment plant that may end up in the river. Now I get it that Plymouth is gonna undertake the, uh, uh, project to separate and that's, that's fine, but Napanee still has combined sewer overflows and they're part of the Yellow River watershed. Uh, I look at the cost of this and I think, you know, um, twenty five million for project one, what's it gonna be for project two, three, four, five, six, seven? We're talking about two, three hundred million dollars potentially to put sewer in replacing, uh, uh, to replace septic when there's no evidence that septic is even an issue. There's just no evidence, we're just charging septic guilty as charged and yet we don't know where the, the human E. coli is coming from. And again, of four samples, three of the four samples, the human E. coli was so low, it wasn't considered unsafe. So I know, uh, Mr. Woodward had actually put out some, uh, data from, uh, the, the lakes that they had tested and the human E. coli is incredibly, actually, I don't even know if it's human E. coli, it could just be E. coli. It's one or two parts per hundred million milliliters, well, the threshold is two hundred and thirty five parts per, per hundred milliliters. So it's like one, two, eight, am I correct, Mr. Woodward? And so you have evidence that's to the contrary, that the water is clean, that the groundwater is clean and yet we all of a sudden wanna just throw the baby out with the bathwater, replace septic, then where is septic, uh, 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 an issue? It's just speculative. This will be brought out, uh, in our public meeting, I, I hope going forward. Um, but I stand, you know, uh, more, uh, in opposition just because I've even learned more. And when you were not told and you voted to petition IDAM, you were not told that the cost could be over two hundred dollars. The only information I had was seventy five, eighty five dollars. To me, it seems like that the, that the petition, you know, should be revoked because the information was not presented properly. So, um, having said that, uh, I'll get off my soapbox, uh, but I do think we, we do need to get together because you're, they're accruing some incredible amount of money, uh, you know, debt and there's no guarantee they're gonna get grants. There's no guarantee that the project can be funded at a low cost. And if the project is gonna cost, uh, more than two hundred, they said they're not gonna go forward. Well, who pays that debt? We, the taxpayers, I mean, the county government, uh, the ratepayers in the district? So, uh, this reminded me a lot of a jail project. We had consultants drive the policy going forward and at the end of the day, we decided not to build a bigger jail, okay? Uh, I'm seeing the same thing, you have three million dollars of money and it's so easy to take fifty thousand here, a hundred thousand there, because it, it just seems like it's there for the taking. And so I think the sewer board does need to stop with their spending. Uh, I think it's, it's, it's absolutely reckless because if you don't have any likelihood of, of grant funding and you've admitted, we're not gonna probably go forward without grant funding, why are you spending well over a million dollars at this point? So, um, with that, again, I get off my soapbox, does, does anybody else wanna chime in? Does anybody else wanna speak on this?
Did a good job.
Okay, so, uh, we had talked about getting together, um, with the board of commissioners. I think it should be a work session. I'd be more than happy to invite the health department to come and testify. I just think that the commissioners and the, and the council should, should lead the discussion in a work session. Stan, I see you back there, Jesse. Uh, is there any dates in the near future you wanna look at? I was thinking, well, it's too early to do it this Thursday, maybe a week from Thursday? You guys got any? Jesse, you wanna speak on that?
I would say, uh-
Can you come up, please? We definitely need the health department there. We need to coordinate perhaps whatever people's schedules are too, but-
Yeah. Jesse Bohan, Commissioner District Three. Um, my schedule's pretty flexible. Um, I would, I would suggest if, uh, if you, Mr. President, would be able to check with, uh, Commissioner Faustus, I know his, his schedule tends to be a little bit more difficult than, uh, than many of ours. Um, whatever time would work for him and for you all, I'll, I'll be there, so.
Okay, well, you guys have a meeting on Monday, you know, and something for you to consider. Um, it's Monday today. Uh, members, do you have any idea when you'd like to meet or have any dates out there?
The twenty first works for me.
What day's that?
That's next Thursday.
Twenty first is Thursday?
That works for everyone else.
Depends on how early.
Um, yeah.
Do we want an evening?
It's early.
So that public can attend?
That might be a better option.
I can't do the evening.
Can't do evening?
You can do evenings or that-
That, that evening.
Okay.
What about the twentieth, Wednesday, the twentieth?
I can do that.
Wednesday, the twentieth?
I'm good with that.
Tentatively-
Whatever day.
I'd say six P. M. I think the public should have an opportunity to speak on this. And I think, I don't, when's the health board, aren't they on, on a Wednesday?
Um, I think they're this Wednesday, I think.
Sewer board is this Wednesday?
Yes, they, yeah, their regular meeting will be this Wednesday, yep. They overlap with Make Hogs, so.
Okay, so tentatively, without writing it in stone, I'll just talk to Adam and others to see if we could do something- to see if we could do something, August 20th on a Wednesday, 6:00 PM? Does that sound good? Okay.
All right.
Okay.
Could I ask a question about your comments? I just, and I'm trying to...
No, no.
You mentioned a test was taken, and it was only one or two parts per billion?
So...
E. coli?
So, that was based on, I think, Mr. Woodward had some test taken, or, or some of his neighbors had it taken. I could, I could also...
Out of Latanka?
Out of Latanka, right? Mr. Woodward?
Latanka was tested. I tested off my pier and my, my well water. And both of those were, I had one part per billion is what it is, and my pier.
Yeah.
Hold on, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Explain the testing you had done.
So, I had my, my lake tested and, and my, my well tested. And they recommend that you have your well tested at like a kitchen sink or one of your sinks, and you take the area out and go through this process. So, and you have to take your test within 24 hours to them, so they can handle it within 24 hours. Otherwise, your, your sample is, is useless, basically. It's contaminated. So, my test out at the lake, and they told me you were gonna have E. coli in an open-bodied water because wildlife, there's gonna be a certain amount. We had one part per billion. And like you said, I think that the level or the, the number that they start getting worried about or excited about is 235 or 253?
235.
235.
235. That's, it's 235. Yeah.
Is it for swimming or?
For recreational use. It's 235 CFUs, which I believe stands for colony farming units for 100 milliliters of water.
I'd like to first check on that number.
Okay, yeah, okay. And, and recently, Lake Latanka had theirs tested, and they had all their, they had three tests, and they were all under 10. So, and we've had other neighbors have had theirs tested, and the same thing, the numbers were very, very low. And no one's had any problems with their well water yet. So, you know, I, our, our testing showed that there's no problems, there's no issues. We're not even close, you know? And most of the stuff that, that you get, in fact, Lawrence and Myers Lake are considered by the DNR cold water fisheries. Those two lakes are more controlled for chemicals and weed control because of the fish habitat in those two lakes. They're treated different than all the other lakes around. And in fact, just a couple of years ago, they put brown trout in the two lakes. They wouldn't do that if there was a quality issue with the water. And I heard rumor that they're gonna be doing that again here before too long. But, the DNR closely monitors those two lakes more than any of the other lakes in the area because of, we even get freshwater jellyfish in August. I think you don't get those in dirty water, you know? So, we don't have a water quality issue. We never did. The, the Clean Water Study that Marshall County did that was in JPR's proposal even said that they're not aware of a water quality issue in Marshall County at this point. So, they even stated that at the same time quoting the, the studies on the Yellow River. And that Yellow River headwater study doesn't even include our area, like I said earlier. You know, it's like, you use this study to say that there's contamination in the river, but we don't ever connect to the river. And then you, you know, you, then you say that there's not a water quality issue, but yet it's all predicated to IDM on, we have a water quality issue, you know? So, I don't get it.
Well, again, I mean, septic is a proven concept. It's been around for many years. Again, I go back to the study that was kind of the impetus of all this. It was E. coli in the headwaters of the Yellow River. And the only human E. coli that they even tried to sample was four sites, one month, one, one, one date. And, you know, if you really want to find out how much human E. coli is in the Yellow River, you need more than four samples. And then, you have to try to ask yourself the question, since the goal is to remove septic, why are we saying septic is responsible for the human E. coli? Because it can come from other places. From my understanding, there's also older homesteads that don't even have septic. They're pumping it straight into a field tile, and it's going into a ditch. Maybe that's where it's coming from. So, if they had septic, maybe we would actually have less E. coli. I'm just speculating. But the point is, we took a speculative study from the Water Task Force, who JPR was a part of. Where do you think that they were gearing the, the solution? They were gearing it towards sewer. And so, I don't think septic has ever been given a fair trial. And it's been presumed guilty, and that I can't see any evidence whatsoever that septic is a problem. So, that's where I stand until I'm proven otherwise.
You know, and the issues with septic, and there are, I'm familiar with the company in town that makes the septic that...
Lake Ainsley.
Right, yeah. I think it, it has more to do with septic, the value of it in close proximity of the homes. In other words, out in the country where you have five acres or greater, it's never an issue at all. It's been a wonderful system to have. And when, you know, if, if those areas out there grow in population, it's gonna become even more of a severe problem too.
Some of these...
You know, it's, it's, I mean, I just want to bring up a little bit of the other side of, of that coin. Septic, septic is not bad. It's a great solution. But maybe not for houses built on 40-foot lots.
Most of these regulations that they have about well and septic, separation, was many years ago, it was under a conventional system. And so, the aerobic system, when you add that to it, the effluents coming out is so much cleaner. Like I said earlier, you, your drain field requirement is 30% less because the effluents coming out is so much cleaner. Also, in those systems, proved by the state of Indiana, you can put a UV light down in that tank. You can put additional filters in that tank. There's areas in this country where they take that effluence coming right out, they put, it goes right out of that septic tank or right out of that, that aerobic tank. It goes into another tank, they pump it out and water their yards with it. There's other areas around the world, water is so, you know, critical and so scarce, they drink it. So, they just filter it a little bit more. But the technology to take that septic tank, run it through an aerobic, and then either further filter it or UV it, the time that effluence comes out, it is not hazardous at all. It's, it's not a threat to other wells or drinking water or anything. But they, but the standards were all developed when it was just the conventional septic system. And there was a study done in 1998 over on the East Coast, and it had to do with watershed for New York and for the Cascades. And back in 98, they went through and they said there was a lot of septic systems that were failing, that were put in wrong, and there was issues. And the study concluded that aerobic systems should be installed, should be mandated for every new system coming in and for all upgrades and all repairs, it should be an aerobic system. That was in 98, you know? So, the technology is there. It's just a matter of of, of using it.
Do we know the cost of those systems?
I, so I talked to Creed, okay? And he told me that, and, and I'm fortunate that my lot is level and easy to get to. And he said $7,000 to $10,000 for an installation of those.
That's for the product and installing?
That's the whole nine yards. He's gonna come out, and he's gonna dig the hole, he's gonna drop that tank in, tie it to my tank, tie it to my leach field, and when he leaves, it's, it's fully functional. The requirements for electric are nothing like the grinder pumps that, that JPR wants to put at the street. The requirements for the electrical on, on an aerobic system is 110. It's like tugging in a light bulb. So, it's, it's nothing. JPR wants a, a 30-amp dedicated breaker, you know? And so, the electrical requirements are quite different, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Anytime, call me. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so, to conclude, we have a tentative date of August 20th, Wednesday at 6:00 PM. Is there further discussion for the council meeting?
Commissioner Folsditch can make that date.
Okay. That concludes the first portion. We're scheduled to take a recess, go into the budget meeting. Does the council want to take a lunch between, let's say, 11:00 and 12:00 and come back? Because we're gonna have a couple, two, three hours, probably a budget hearing before us. Would that be acceptable to everyone? Is that acceptable with you, Madam Honider? We took a lunch, or... Okay, okay.
Did you say that's okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, if you just...
So, we stay in recess until... I'm sorry.
Yeah, if you just put the meeting in recess.
We'll, we'll recess until noon, okay? Okay.
That shouldn't be an issue.